This meeting is called by order. Father John, would you come forward and deliver our opening invocation?
This is the day that you have made. Let us rejoice and be glad. Almighty Father, we ask that your send your guiding spirit upon Robert, John, Julie, Ralph, Richard, Greg, Randall, Amy, and Jill, and all of our town officials, that through your inspiration, they may do what is best for our town and our community. This we pray in your holy name. Amen. Thank you.
Do you want to mention about the agmetical service?
It says public comments only on the agenda.
Okay.
That's me.
I would be ruled out of work.
Thank you, Father John, for staying in order.
Yeah.
We'll start with a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands on the nation of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Barbara Carnegie.
Here.
John Foreman.
Present.
Julie Rivera.
Here.
Ralph Miller.
Present.
Richard Sharp.
Here.
Greg Parker.
Here.
Ryan Lee Meyer.
Present.
We have a quorum. We'll start tonight with an oath of office. Chief welcoming, Court Treasurer Amy Gross.
Tony Altman. Tonight I would like to swear in Tony Altman as a volunteer for the fire department. Tony comes from New Chicago as a volunteer with some experience, two years, three years, three years. Currently as an EMT, works in the private sector. Recently moved to Cedar Lake and came to us with all the certs needed to be a firefighter. Met with our volunteer board, was approved by our volunteer board, and we're hoping that Amy can swear him in tonight so we can get him going. We got him geared up and ready to go, so. Come on over here. Amy Gross, our court treasurer.
I am Anthony Altman. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the states of Indiana, the ordinances of the town of Cedar Lake, and the rules and regulations of the Cedar Lake Fire Department.
Of the Cedar Lake Fire Department.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and honestly discharge the duties of my office as volunteer member of the Cedar Lake Fire Department, to which I have been appointed according to law and to the best of my skill and ability. So help me God.
Welcome to the Lord, Tony. Thank you.
Well, it's good to have another volunteer. It's hard to find good volunteers anymore, so thanks for joining us. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for moving to town.
Next, we have public comment on agenda items. If you have public comment on an agenda item, come forward, state your name and address for the record. Is there a public comment?
Little notice, 14029 South Lake County, Cedar Lake. I'm also the transit trustee for town over country. And I wanted to, it's on the agenda item for our contract. My board has signed the contract. I wanted to provide a copy of that signed contract. Also, and it's not on the agenda item, but you had asked for us to contribute to London Willie bill for our part in the fire territory. And I had stated we were not going to pay that bill. I've discussed it with my board, and it is only fair that we do pay our fair share because we were a partner in looking into those options. And I have a check to pay that share.
Okay. Can you circulate all that with your copies of the contract?
I also wanted to say, Jill, if you are going to get a discount, that huge discount, I appreciate it. Thank you for saving us money. People don't know what you do, but we appreciate it. Thank you.
And she did. It was a substantial discount.
Discount double check.
Mitch, the part of the discount goes to the negotiating team.
Thank you, Mitch. Any other public comment on agenda items? Any other public comments? Third and final call for public comment. Public comments closed. We have our consent agenda, which is the minutes of the April 17, 2018 public meeting. Claims, all town funds, $123,086.44. Wastewater operating, $183,940.78. Water utility, $4,497.27. Stormwater, $61,257.75. Payroll for April 19, 2018, and May 1, 2018, $172,705.12. The manual journal entries for April 1 through the 30, 2018. Donations, Police Department, Aaron Sherkey, $400, and Michael Lucas Lukeks, $250 for Dare Fraternal Order of Eagles, $100. MacArthur PTO, $1,000, and Christopher Burke Engineering, $1,000 or $100. Proclamation for fibromyalgia Awareness Day, May 12, 2018. Clubhouse waiver request for Girl Scout Troop 35107 for June 4, 2018, for teenagers. June 19, July 17, and August 21, 2018, and Summerfest fireworks permit and fee waiver. Is there a motion to accept and waive the reading of the minutes in accepted consent agendas listed?
Subdued.
Motion by Councilmember Foreman.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Rivera. Are there questions or discussion?
Come in. Looking at the claims, we hired GMI for our garbage service. How long have we had them now?
It's been quite a few years now.
All right. But I calculated if we would have had the old service, we're paying them on this thing Based on the calculation that I made, we would have had to pay our other provider $88,414. So this month, not having that service, we are saving $21,826.55. And I never heard of GMI before.
Thanks, Bob.
Bob used a spreadsheet this week, didn't he?
Thank you, Bob. Is there any other questions or discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Barbara Carnegie.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Ralph Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sharp.
Yes.
Greg Parker.
Yes.
Ryan Lee Meyer.
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Ordances and resolutions. Item one is ordinance 1293 Traffic Code Amendment. The first reading of this was in the April 17, 2018 meeting. Councilmember Parker, vice title only, please.
House of Lake County, Indiana. Orders on 1293. Orders amending town traffic rules obtained through speed limits and codified in town code SAG-12, amended to include all ordinances and town code provisions. The parties are on the calendar here with all manner of legal.
Thank you. Chief Coulson, a quick explanation of the Traffic Code Amendment, of what we're looking to do, just a refresher.
Yes, change the speed limit from 30 to 25 along Lake Shore Drive to Hilltop in the 133rd in both directions.
Okay. Thank you. You heard the second reading of ordinance 1293. Is there a motion to adopt?
Subdued.
Motion by Councilmember Miller.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Sharp. Questions or discussion?
Mr. President, that also included the amendment from your last meeting on parish action.
Noted. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
I have a question. I wasn't at the last meeting, 137 to 151, 20 miles per hour?
No, no, no. I amend that to 30 miles per hour in that area. That's where part of it used to be. The old town code didn't include when we annexed.
Oh, I see. Okay.
When we annexed into the town, so we needed to update that since we're already doing the update.
And has decreased the speed limit along Lake Shore Drive there from Hilltop.
Yeah, I knew about that a month ago.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call.
Barbara Carnegie.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Ralph Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sharp.
Yes.
Greg Parker.
Yes.
Ryan Lee Meyer.
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Item two is resolution number 1222, Community Development Lock Grant Participation Agreement. Mr. Parker, vice title only, please. Explanation, Town Administrator.
Resolution number 21.
Resolution number 1222. Resolution operating from the Cedar Lake, House of Lake, Indiana, to agreement with county and lake in Indiana undertaking community development activities.
Thank you. We have Mr. Brown, special guest with us tonight, a very familiar face. Tim, would you like to speak?
I'm just here for questions primarily. This is our, every three years, we're in front of you to renew a contract to continue the black grant.
Can you tell the audience who you're with, who you work for?
I'm the executive director of the Lake County Community Economic Development Department. Been there since March of '15. We've been working with the communities of 16 cities and towns of Lake County. Everybody other than Gary Hamm in East Chicago, because they have their own programs and their own federal funds. But everybody consolidated back in 1984 and created this particular department, and we run about $1.2 million of federal funds through the department every year.
Do you do any work with the Indiana Economic Development Corporation?
We have before. We, at times, depending on how their programs are structured, we help do some financing on revolving loan fund, which is also some of the community black grant money. It's also some of the old federal government sharing money from the 80s that is a revolving home fund. And when they ask us to participate, we can help with typically up to like 20% of the total positive project. We have five different loans out right now to a total of about $1.4 million.
Do you ever do any work with the RDA as well?
Have not, but we could, if they chose to do something with it, we could participate with some of that, yes.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Tim. Any questions for Mr. Brown?
No.
Joe, no explanation of what we're doing here?
Like Mr. Brown said, this is our participation agreement. Last time, we approved this was back in 2015. It is a three-year agreement, and we get funding from CDDB every other year. Approximately $57,450 the past two years. We have used those funds for light elimination in the past, restroom improvements. This current funding cycle, we are using the money for the ADA curb ramping. We use the money in High Grove subdivision previously to do some of the stormwater improvements in that area prior to that roadway improvement project up there.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks, Tim.
Love you.
You heard resolution 1222. Is there a motion to approve?
Subdued.
I'll second the various motion.
Motion by Councilmember Parker, seconded by Councilmember Foreman. Other questions or discussion? Roll call.
Barbara Carnegie.
Yes.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Ralph Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sharp.
Yes.
Greg Parker.
Yes.
Ryan Lee Meyer.
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Thanks, Tim, and thanks for doing what you do with rebuilding together. Guys are doing awesome.
Oh, yeah, that's coming up on September 15 here in Cedar Lake.
You doing a home here?
Well, we'll do up to 10 of them here.
Really?
Yeah. Sometimes we do as many as 12, but usually it's 10. I was going to stay for the public comment, but now that you've asked, I'll go.
Yeah, go ahead.
We start at about 6 o'clock in the morning, and it goes till whenever we get finished. We do up to 12 homes. We also typically do one community service project. A lot of that is like mulching of area or painting equipment, you know, that type of thing. We have anywhere between 250 and 300 volunteers show up from a single day. We do all that work. We spend anywhere between $3,500 and $5,000 per house. They've been in existence since 1995. My first year on the board was 1997. The first year I worked with was '96. In fact, that was the year I came here. We were in Cedar Lake that year. And we've done well over 250 homes and spent well over $300,000 over the last 20 something years, so it's pretty good.
That's awesome. That is a great.
And a lot of that has been federal government funds, none of the town. Now, we do ask our communities if they want to participate to like have this spot for free, for breakfast. We ask them if they want to, you know, help kick in with garbage pickup. You guys have done that for years for us. Where your public work staff just picks up the stuff in the morning, we sit at the curb, they grab it. We locate a dumpster. We took them to pay for the dumpsters, but we'll locate them in spots where we can use them. You guys help us with that, and that's about all we ask for.
Well, when the time comes, let us know what you need, Tim. We'll do what we can.
Actually, Jill will. She's now on our board.
Wow. How can you pull that off?
Tim didn't want to do it anymore.
I wanted to do it, it was. I'm ready to delegate, Tim.
It's teamwork around here.
Yeah.
Tim, how does a homeowner apply?
Well, actually, there's a, we have a website. It's rebuildingtogether.southlake.com. The application is already on the site. I just checked it, about five minutes ago to make sure it worked. It does say Cedar Lake. It does say 2018, and it gives you the right date, so, on September 15. You fill out an application. I know that Ralph got some for the, oh, and we were at the Chamber Expo. We were at the Chamber Expo, and Ralph picked up some applications, and I think, Mitch, did you pick up a few too?
Yes, I did.
So Mitch has a few of them. We also send them to some of the other churches, so that they, so that get out there. I don't know if you put any out for here. If you have, if you have them here, great. So there's some of them here, Tim.
Actually, I have some pictures for you, so.
Well, yeah, but, you know, frankly, we always do. We always have. So usually, we try to get them by May, and that way, we make a decision in May, and typically select the homes by July, and that gives the house captains enough time to figure out exactly what their expenses are for the house.
Any other questions for Tim? Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. See you.
Thank you.
We have resolution 1223 firefighter EMT paramedic training reimbursement agreement. Mr. Parker, vice title only, please.
25.
27? Yep, there it is. No, actually, the resolution's on 25.
Yeah, that's 1223 right there. House of Lake County, Indiana, resolution number 1223. Resolution amending the Cedar Lake Fire Department hiring procedures required entry into an execution of a firefighter, firefighter EMT paramedic training reimbursement agreement as a condition of employment as a member of the Cedar Lake Fire Department in all manner of legal. Town Administrator?
Mr. President, as you may or may not know, Chief Welkin and myself have been working on this training reimbursement agreement for some time, as the department continues to grow and expand. It's one of those things we need as we invest in our people. We need the investment back from them into our community. We've discussed this at much length. It's very, it's similar in the training agreement that we have with police officers. So we looked at the costs of training, the cost in investment into, into the fire officers, the EMTs, the paramedics that we need, and to show that we're going to invest in them. We also need them to show that they're going to invest and continue with our community. And as David knows, we've had this draft go through his office as well, and the resolution was prepared by his office.
Is there a motion by the council to approve resolution 1223?
Make a motion to approve resolution 1223.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Foreman, seconded by Councilmember Rivera. Other questions or discussion?
Yes. I do not, just for personal, where it says 60 months, I would prefer that to say five years. Because I just looked at that, and I didn't catch a month, and I thought it said 60 days, and then I relooked at it again, and it just seems like it would be a lot clearer if it said five years.
Well, 12 and 5.
It's five, it's five years, not 60 months. But I would like it to say five years instead of 60 months.
So why waste the money changing a contract for the same meeting?
It's a, it's a minor change.
Do either people who made the motion and second concur?
I do not. Let's just keep it 60 months.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Barbara Carnegie.
No.
John Foreman.
Yes.
Julie Rivera.
Yes.
Ralph Miller.
Yes.
Richard Sharp.
Yes.
Greg Parker.
Yes.
Ryan Lee Meyer.
Yes, motion carries six one. Old business, item one is the 2018 ambulance EMS and fire protection services agreement. This was deferred from the last one, two, three, four, five meetings. We had a negotiating team, the council, had Ralph Miller and Rick Sharp meet with Mitch Lopez and who else was there from the township?
Mr. D. Meyer.
And Rich D. Meyer. Would you care to come forward to kind of give a report on what was discussed in that meeting and this contract that's in front of us?
Well, the contract put forth is the same as the previous contract that we had. The negotiating team came to explain to them in full detail why it is that the township has offered this contract, and how this is what we can do. And we pushed it to the limits on how we can contribute. We would just like to see evolve on this contract, that there is anything else that we can do.
Mitch, can we interject a couple things?
Sure.
Do you mind if you go through the numbers real quick?
Sure.
Make sure that these are right, Mitch, okay? These are what in the contract you just passed out, but.
Correct.
Okay. The 115 you received from the state, right? 115,000?
That is everything that we receive for fire EMS.
For fire EMS, right. The 40,000 comes from your Q fund that you have.
That comes from, that we will be receiving this year from our team of other funds.
20 is the Lowell Fund?
Correct.
Okay. And then that adds to 175, and they kicked in an extra 5,000 to make it 180. Now, that compares to 2017, it was 160,000.
That is correct.
Yeah, so around $20,000 from last year.
Over last year.
And I think, I've been talking with Amy earlier today, what's in our budget is also 160,000, so.
I think it's 180, isn't it, in our budget? I think our budget's 180.
Actually, it's two installments of 80 per total of 160, something like that.
Yeah. And we also talked at our meeting about the equipment that the township owns. They will pay 100% of the repairs on that, on that equipment. They will also pay 50% of repairs on equipment that the town owns, because the town's fire equipment goes out to, you know, their territory and all of that. So they're going to end up paying for half of that. At the meeting, we also came up with, Mitch was going to be here at the meeting today, and he was going to be presenting us with a check for their part of the money that they owe from the fire department. And I think that's, I think that pretty well covers what we talked about. Mitch, is there a agreement?
We do.
And the conversation, the conversation that, another conversation that we had, that really got to me, is this is a contract, this was going on between the fire department in Cedar Lake and the township for well over 70 years. To people's memory, the township has never turned the fire department down for something that they needed. Todd, is that a true statement?
Absolutely. I've been on the department 31 years and over.
So, I mean, to me, that, that also said something to me, that if the Cedar Lake Fire Department needs something, we've got it set up, that Todd does a purchase order, gives Mitch the purchase order, and then we've got to work out the details between Mitch and the town, because Amy and I had a talk. We'll let them move, then the bill gets paid. And that's to satisfy DLG up close and stakeholder accounts.
Right.
They can be, they can be really silly sometimes.
Right. You know, we normally have, just like with the truck, we assisted with that, you know, we titled it, you know, township names, because that is what's recommended. We always want to do the right thing, which is why we agreed even before this contract was signed, to get the equipment that the firefighters needed. I don't know what kind of machine it is, but they needed a machine for the air tanks.
47,000, I think.
Forty-two thousand dollars. And even without a contract, we agreed to make that purchase because they need it. And we're not going to waste all this contract itself. Just like they've been going out there to service the uncorporated areas, even though there has been no contract.
Is this contract basically from the wording of it? Is this from last year? Was there anything added or changed?
Yes, Randy, after the very first time we met early in January, we added, it was, we changed the verbiage to item two, term of the agreement. We made it so it says one year instead of continuous, if you recall.
Gotcha.
So this was the updated contract prior to us going into discussions on the fire territory.
There was also another addition, which was section four was added, because on the first one, we did not have the titling of the equipment on the township name. You know, after reviewing, we did a lot of review of the statutes, we wanted that added on there. But we did a lot of research, and again, the reason we put the community fund on this contract was as a courtesy to the town to be able to budget their finances.
Now, that's something that normally isn't done in other townships.
Yeah. Most townships will not put it on a contract like we have done.
Todd, are you satisfied with that?
I make a motion that we.
Hold, 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 son. Dave, have you had time to review this?
I have, and I will get it carefully.
Okay, are you good?
This is your call.
Okay, I have a, I have a, I mean, as far as legal parameters are, are, is it okay?
It meets requirements of law if you need.
All right. I don't want to diminish any of the work that's been done by you, Mr. D. Meyer, the owner of Mr. D. Meyer, and Director Ralph here. I do want to point out one thing, though, moving forward. We have to be able to staff two ambulances.
Todd, am I wrong? Am I speaking on the contrary?
No, you're right.
We have to get to the point where we can staff two ambulances for the town and the township. And I think everybody needs to start thinking about that right now, because we're not going to keep kicking a can down the road. That's the wrong thing to do. It's always been done here. It's time it stops. know, we titled it, you know, township names, but that is what's recommended. We always want to do the right thing, which is why we agreed even before this contract was signed to get the equipment that the firefighters needed. I don't know what kind of machine it is, but they needed a machine for the air tanks.
Forty-seven thousand, I think.
Forty-two thousand dollars. And even without a contract, we agreed to make that purchase because they need it. And we're not going to waste all this contract stuff. Just like they've been going out there to service the uncorporated areas even though there has been no contract.
Is this contract basically from the wording of it? Is this from last year? Was there anything added or changed?
Yes, Randy. After the very first time we met early in January, we added, it was, we changed the verbiage to Item Two, term of the agreement. We made it so it says one year instead of continuous, if you recall.
Gotcha.
So, this was the updated contract prior to us going into discussions on the fire territory.
There was also another addition, which was Section Four was added. Because on the first one, we did not have the titling of the equipment on the township name. You know, after reviewing, we did a lot of review of the statutes. We wanted that added on there. We did a lot of research. And again, the reason we put the cumulative fund on this contract was as a courtesy to the town to be able to budget their finances.
Now, that's something that normally isn't done in other townships.
Yeah. Most townships will not put it on a contract like we have done.
Paul, are you satisfied with that?
I make a motion that we...
Hold, hold, hold. Sorry. Dave, have you had time to review this?
I have tonight. I will get it carefully.
Okay. Are you good?
This is your call.
Okay. I have a, I have a, I mean, as far as legal parameters, are, is it okay?
It meets requirements of law if you need to...
All right. I don't want to diminish any of the work that's been done by you, Mr. Neumeyer, the owner, Mr. Neumeyer, and Director Ralph here. I do want to point out one thing, though, moving forward. We have to be able to staff two ambulances.
Todd, am I wrong? Am I speaking on the contrary?
No, you're right.
We have to get to the point where we can staff two ambulances for the town and the township. And I think everybody needs to start thinking about that right now. Because we're not going to keep kicking the can down the road. That's the wrong thing to do. It's always been done here. It's time it stops. And I don't know why, I don't know why anybody would want to do that anymore. I don't get it. But Cedar Lake could have been a lot more than it is thirty years ago if everybody just didn't kick the can down the road.
We're not the county to kick that can.
Well, of course we are. That's it.
We tried to do the best as we can.
I'm not opposed to going along with this contract because, because I'm being told that it's okay. But we are kicking the can down the road. That's exactly what we're doing.
Greg, I believe that we've got everything that we can legally get.
I understand that.
You know, I believe that the township...
All I'm saying, Paul and ladies, is we, at some point, we're going to have to come up with a plan to get what we need to have for public safety so we are prepared for whatever happens.
And Ralph and I, Mitch, and Mr. Neumeyer, we talked about that, getting this signed, getting this contract finally behind this May first of 2018, and then starting as soon as possible, moving forward. Because this doesn't make any sense.
Good idea, and I hope that we can discuss the possibility of a fire territory. I don't think we need to put that completely to bed. Maybe that the formulation of it, maybe there were some things that didn't quite go right. But for a long-term solution next still, under Indiana law, probably the most sustainable thing that we have.
I agree that might be the most sustainable. You know, at this time, obviously, there was not a full consensus of it. I wouldn't pursue it anytime immediately.
It should be a part of any discussion that we have.
It should be.
Yes, it absolutely should be.
Yeah. But it should not be part of the discussion as we're trying to negotiate the contract. We should have the contract set, negotiate one for next year, 2019, so it's not being contingent on what happens with the territory.
I agree.
So, we're just open-minded, listen, and moving forward.
I don't know that it has to be, I mean, I don't know all the parameters of this. I don't know it has to be fire territory. I do know this. We have to staff two ambulances. We got to fund it, and township's got to help.
We've been helping.
I understand that. It has to be an even number, though, at some point, Mitch.
I understand. But from what we receive and what we get, this is the best that I can do from my office.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank our team, thank the Township trustee, and...
Thank you for coming.
And with that, I'd like to make a motion to be accepted, Tom.
Motion by Councilmember Miller, seconded by Councilmember Sharp. Are there questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
John Foreman?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Greg Parker?
Yes.
Ryan Neumeyer?
Yes, motion carries seven, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it will be signed at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mitch. New Business, Item One is Visioning Principles. Town Administrator Mur.
Council, at your last work session with the Veritas group, you identified your visioning principles, which are located on page forty-one of your packet. The town of Cedar Lake is considering redevelopment in certain areas of town. Those areas are still yet to be determined in order to accomplish the following. Create a connection point for our current businesses and residents to live, thrive, explore, relax, and come together as a community. To establish a new lifestyle center to include mixed use of this retail conference, convention, and lodging options in order to build a diversified tax space capable of serving and meeting the needs of our community. Three, enhance the natural views, public interaction with and access to the lake while improving property values and marketability of our community. And four, develop a sustainable approach to development to allow us to be proactive in guiding our growth, improving our quality of life, and enhancing the future of our community. As was discussed at that work session, that these items would be the principles, the vision principles that you guys, you all determined to be for Cedar Lake and that you would approve those at your next public meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You've heard of visioning principles listed by the town administrator. Is there a motion to approve those principles?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Sharp?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rivera. Questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
No.
John Foreman?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Greg Parker?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries six, one. And Greg, this is, this kind of stuff here with the redevelopment and moving forward with diversifying tax base, I think will help us to not kick the can down the road any longer. We've got to, we've got to get through our parts.
Every time we do something different, it helps us not to kick the can down the road and do the same old thing we've always done. Because that's what we've always done. We get a history lesson because we've done the same thing for seventy-one years or something. It doesn't, it doesn't provide for the future. It's a nice history lesson, and it's great that that's happened, and we still have to get through it.
Time to pick up the can.
Sure.
Item Two, Police Officer Recommendation. Chief Coulson?
Yes, through the Metropolitan Police Commission, we have a recommendation for a higher, new higher provision of police officers.
Mr. President, do you want to amend the agenda?
No, it's already on the agenda.
What's the gentleman's name? Eric Godoy.
Where's he come from?
East Chicago Police Department.
Good.
Good.
Experience officer?
Yes.
How many years?
Approximately ten years in patrol as well as gang and narcotics investigation.
Fabulous.
Very happy to hear it. That's experience.
Okay, there's a recommendation by the Board of Metropolitan Police Commissioners and Chief Coulson to hire Police Officer Eric Godoy.
So moved.
There's a motion by Councilmember Parker, seconded by Councilmember Carnahan. Are there questions or discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Austin?
All legal requirements, conditions, testing?
Yes, it would be a conditional offer contingent in passing any requirements that you would have. He's already in the public employee retirement fund program, so he's already a member of that, so we can bypass some of the requirements.
You concur with the contingency?
Absolutely.
Mr. Carnahan? Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
John Foreman?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Greg Parker?
Yes.
Ryan Neumeyer?
Yes, motion carries seven, zero. Thank you, Chief.
Is there, is there like a whole piece pancake breakfast this Sunday?
Yes.
Or is it at?
It's at the KFC home, and I think it's repaid, so.
You're supposed to come up here and plug that stuff.
It's a separate entity from the police department, so I can stay out of that.
Okay.
Or make him cook.
You're going to be cooking pancakes?
No, I'm just...
I think John just called him.
And Hill, do you want me to report on the next item?
Council, if you don't mind, as we go into committee reports, if you're okay with Chief going into the first item of Public Works and Safety.
There was a review done of some of the fee structures regarding reports that are issued out, and we have made a recommendation, the police commission raised several of those fees, specifically twelve feet, twenty hours, and that's with regards to somebody that's been, their vehicle's impounded due to the rest or other circumstance, not related to the model of the accident. Also, these regarding reports that are issued out from the public, slight increases. There hasn't been one for some time. But we presented that to the police commission labor in the courts.
One of the things that's like a common misconception is that when your officers write a ticket, that this is going in the police department coffers, when in all actuality, by the time all the fees from that ticket are paid to the county, a lot of times, we end up at a negative. So, I mean, are you looking into some of those things as well to try and close the gap as far as issuing citations?
I don't believe it's probably for, Mr. Austin, to respond to. I think some of those fees are already settled, and we have no...
Violation items are higher regulated by others than you.
Is there anything we can do to close the gap on some of that stuff when it comes to costs?
I think the chief has started that with recommendations about things like tow fees and impound fees and the like. Those will require mandatory ordinances. That's how the fees are collected or charged. So, we have that recommendation, and we'll be considering more of this.
How is that negative, Randy? When the police officer has to go to court and get paid per hour?
Yeah, but there was, there was some accounting done of actually what's collected in a citation compared to what it costs to prosecute that citation, and it's actually ends up a burden on the town to write a ticket. It's crazy.
I kind of like that.
The whole thing's kind of a burden on the town.
I get it. And I don't think we should be writing tickets for revenue, but we also, it shouldn't also cost us money to enforce the law. I mean, it's kind of...
Yeah, you're right.
The funds all come from the same place, Mr. Neumeyer.
I get it, Greg. I'm just saying is that, you know, we're asking our department to bear a burden that is being put on us by the county and state.
We'd like to, like for them to leave breakeven.
Yeah. A zero-sum game would be perfect.
Right, yeah. We would do.
So, Council, with this direction, if you're okay with it, I will work with the chief and the town attorney to draft those amendments, and you will have most likely three mandatory ordinances in front of you in the near future to make those changes.
I will look forward to seeing them. Go forth and...
What can we do?
Thanks, David.
And moving on with committee reports, if I may?
You may.
Parked Recreation, we have a committee conference call scheduled for this Friday at four o'clock. We'll be discussing the tourism fund requests and various matters that will bring before you at your next public meeting, most likely by signing the recommendations of that call. Redevelopment, the Lincoln Plaza project began yesterday. Myself and Tim, Director of Operations, working with the businesses, the engineer and the contractor on access to those businesses while we're under construction, those improvements in the area. That's a redevelopment project that was put on hold when we had the issues with the second phase of one hundred and thirty-third. So, we're able to bring that project to the forefront and to... Paying done.
The cost of that?
The cost of the contract is just under four hundred thousand dollars, not including engineer fees and any of those other costs. Planning, we have the planning commission work session tomorrow. Utility, the JMOB had a special meeting on April twenty-third wherein they approved the flow monitoring services in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Two of the firms that had submitted quotes were from the Indianapolis area. They were going to obtain one more from a local contractor. And the JMOB approved, and not to exceed an amount of seventy-five thousand dollars on that project. Additionally, they approved a proposal for engineering services to Shrewsbury for interceptor rehabilitation in an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand dollars for design and seventy-eight hundred dollars for the bid phase of that project. This comes in as the next step of that interceptor televising that's been ongoing from the flume all the way down to the whole plant. The construction phase of that will be determined at a later date for the engineering services. The next JMOB meeting is going to be on Wednesday, May twenty-third, here in Cedar Lake. Street and Road Projects, what can I say? We've got a lot of work going on. High Grove Subdivision is underway. Drove down Fairbanks last evening, and there's just roads far up everywhere. So, we're investing back into the community, and we're seeing a lot of work going on in that area. South Shore Improvements, work is underway. Parish Avenue, schedule coordination is continuing. That project's going to start once school is out. So, we're anticipating the first week of June.
The people on Lenz were waiting to have a block party when the road is started.
Oh, I know. I've already talked to a couple of them. There's a few on my list to come in every two weeks. Clyde and Extra Drive Roundabout, the quarterly tracking meeting with NERF City is going to be Tuesday, May fifteenth, so I'll probably have an update for you at that, at your next council meeting. And Ecosystem Restoration, we had a coordination meeting scheduled for yesterday, but Decor rescheduled with us in our next meeting, November twenty.
We also had in the committee reports Context Proposal. I'll comment a little on that. This is something I brought to the council a little while ago. This is a company called Context Design. And what it is, is it takes this planning process of a downtown redevelopment a step further. It really dives into the details. It really dives hard into the community engagement and gets us to that point where we have projects that are shovel-ready. There are four tasks in this, which would be prepare revised concept plans for both Midway Gardens and the Town Hall vicinity. The priority should be to add detail and market readiness to both plans. Generate publication-ready images that articulate Cedar Lake's exciting vision. Develop budget estimates that can be coupled with economic impact analysis to forecast responsible public reinvestment, and recommend policy and governance changes. Some of these, they're Task Three and Four, there might be some redundancies that we can actually eliminate, which will lower the cost of it. But I think with, with the type of work that they will be doing, that this would be a really good item for the redevelopment commission to consider, because so much of these next steps will be funded through the RDC, that it's going to be important that we involve the redevelopment commission in this. So, I would like to take this proposal to the redevelopment commission's next public meeting for review and consideration. So, rather than putting the burden all on this group, that we have vision principles set, that everything that they would do within this would be cohesive to those vision principles. So, there's a foundation set now, and now it's a matter of taking it those steps further.
Sure.
So, the base service cost of this would be twenty thousand, five hundred dollars, and the optional services, like I said, some of those things that we might think are redundant, is a total of fifteen thousand, two hundred. Very similar in cost to what Veritas has done for us. Scope and team are similar, too, but the product is, like I said...
Have these guys worked with Veritas in the past?
They've actually worked for the city of Whiting in a lot of what they've done. Their product there, as you know, is becoming legendary.
But are they familiar with Veritas?
Yeah, they work hand-in-hand on a lot of things. So, but Mayor Joe, Mr. Herter in Whiting can probably give you a really good report on how they've interacted with the city and the product that they've gotten for the investment. So, I'll be carrying this to the redevelopment commission's agenda for their review.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. President?
Mr. Austin?
We'll go back to utility and Jill's report for a second.
Yes, sir.
Jill, are we being copied on the technical reports and status updates regarding the interceptor project activities and due diligence that's in progress?
We are.
Do we have yet an engineer's estimate of cost for the rehabilitation of that?
That is what the forty-eight thousand dollar design...
That's where the...
For home boys. That's where that comes from.
And what is the concrete that they have identified needed in this contract?
I'll have that off the top of my head.
I don't know if we're going to go, will we only pay May, the May meeting?
We should.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I think there was something, they were trying to get through.
That's a major capital improvement, and it's going to be something that's been possible. That's why I asked you questions.
That ties in with it, that compliance, the agreed order, the timeline. That's why as the interceptor televising is occurring, they're starting to design the areas that are already talked about. So, they're kind of playing hand in hand.
Thank you.
We're very fortunate that we have Neil and Jill and Tim to come down to those meetings and visit. Neil wasn't the one that reported that, why don't we get another bid from somebody local, somebody that he knew that could probably come in and do, do a bid for less than the seventy-five thousand. The two that we were looking at, both from Indiana... The two that we were looking at, both from Indianapolis, which just happened to be where Shrewsbury is. Now, I didn't mean that it's a bad, it's a bad company dream like that, but it was good, it was good to know business. And then point those things out, fine.
Additionally, using that, the cost of meal services to do some construction observation on work being done down there at the plant, so saving on those costs where you would just have to travel using a local engineer.
Yeah.
Thank you. Town council reports, any town council?
This Thursday at 12 noon, the Gaseville, sponsored by Gateway Church, we will be doing the same as being done all on the United States National Day of Prayer.
Thank you, Bob. Any other town council reports? Town attorney?
No reports.
Park treasurer?
I wanted to compliment Josh Rivera. Last meeting, I wasn't able to be here, but I was able to pick it up on Facebook, and I heard the sound very well and the video was very clear. You don't know how tempted I was to make some comments of my own after seeing the last meeting. So, thank you very much, Josh, for bringing that forward to some people who really can see it.
Josh is going to be a reporter, right, Josh?
Job.
He's coming for your job, Mary.
I'll pass, she can have it.
Thank you. Item four, town administrator?
I work for it, everything I know.
Staff? Okay. Break communication?
Counselor, you have your Christopher Burke report. Mostly the items I reported on, the one thing that is in here and that has been completed and was submitted as of Monday is our annual MS4 compliance and coordination report. So, that covers calendar years 2016 and '17.
Okay, we go to open public comment. Father John Kavolchik, Father John Kavolchik, 10717 West 134th Place, Cedar Lake, Indiana.
Tracy Haskel, 13436, Iowa.
Well, firstly then, I love where I live. I want to make that perfectly clear. I love where I live. I live by the softball fields, baseball fields, my son had a great time growing up there. Wonderful. Except, I have no problem, and I think it's great, we have tournaments at the softball fields, make use of them, at the baseball fields, make use of them, absolutely. But this past weekend, there was a 32-team tournament.
Little League softball?
Girl softball.
I was over there all the weekend, it was a mess.
That's an understatement, sir.
We had a fire there, too.
I, if the male had not come very early that day, nobody on our street on 134th Place for sure would have gotten there. Okay? My driveway was blocked, couldn't get out, I had to have, go get somebody to move their car. I understand that. If they're going to have a tournament, would you, Lee, can, is there some way that they can let the neighbors know that there's going to be a tournament?
At least a one-day notice, not three hours ago, we just started a 32-team tournament.
You know, that would be wonderful. I don't know about the legal things, okay? If they could open up that parking lot that's on 133rd and Osborne, I think that's the city property. I don't know if they could have used that or some other place, but there was still Little League going on, and then obviously a 32-team softball tournament. There was a brush fire at the end of the road. I looked out my window and they had a hard time getting there. So, for public safety and for others, making a right-hand turn out of 134th Place onto Osborne was almost impossible. Chief Coulson, oh, I got to address the chair. To Chief Coulson, if your officers wanted to make some money for the town that day with stop sign violations, that was a great day to do it.
They could have just stepped by my tree. Six minutes I stepped at the end of my driveway just wanting to back out, and they would not stop at the stop signs for me to back out. I'm right at a stop sign.
So, I mean, I think it's great that they had it, I think it's great for the community, helping businesses, I think it's great, just let us know.
They don't really have adequate parts to handle a 32-team tournament over there.
I did talk to one of the board members, and he did tell me, they agreed to the tournament, and good for them, they're trying to fundraise, it's like a fundraiser for them, and they do need it. I put a lot of volunteer time, so my whole family in those fields for years, but they did not know it was a 32-team tournament. And I even stated to him, we need at least a one-day notice. I mean, the Chicagoland came out of my husband.
And the parking plan, too, you would think.
Something, you know.
The Chicagoland came out of your husband?
We had, yeah, he wanted, he wanted a VP to get cigarettes and put lawn chairs out of the curb so he can park when he got home. It's sad.
So, who won the tournament, do you know? Did you not care?
You know what, every night when I went to bed and I put extra stuff on my windows, because the light, they put any light bulbs in there, lights, and it just lit up my house, at midnight they were still going, every night, so.
So, have they had a board meeting of their board? I don't know when they're meeting. Because I, what can we do to help? Well, I would assume, obviously wrongly, that they would have to notify somebody in the town that they were having this big tournament. Or something. They don't.
They don't really have to, because they do own that property. But if, yeah, in some way.
I mean, just for parking? Nothing. Anyway.
Maybe you can just send a letter asking for an advance notice so we could.
Is there something that, maybe going to their board meeting and talking is. If you find out when their board meeting is, I'll be happy to go tell them the same thing, I just told all of you. Well, do you know anybody on their board? I do not.
I've already spoken to.
Can you find out when a meeting is and maybe go and express these things, say, do you guys, like, communicate with the neighborhood? Martin Stinger's on their board.
We could put in the board, too, our town's, upcoming Cedar Lake Little League tournament, upcoming softball tournament.
The parades are there when they have the parades, so that they know to stay off the road.
So, Chief Wollinger just said, a gentleman who comes to our meetings once in a while is on the board, Mr. Stinger. Not Larry Stingers. I will endeavor to meet with Mr. Stinger. That would be great.
I mean, we do own that land on the corner. I don't see tax payers on it, I don't see my car that could park there. A little bit of a walk.
It's only two blocks.
Maybe it could create a shuttle in the future, but it may sell, who knows?
They were still walking two blocks where they were parking, so, but at least it would.
I didn't realize we had the facilities there to host 32.
There's two, there's two fields that like older people could be on, there's another field that's like for 12 and under, 14 and under, then there's a small field for little kids, that field they did not use. So, they were using three fields for the tournaments.
When I played Little League there, when I played Little League there, our first practices were landscaping. We had a landscape crew, we had to basically rebuild the fields every year. The fields look nice, the parking lot looks nice. They did a lot of work there.
Everything looks good, the Cedar Lake, Cedar Lake, softball.
Go ahead, Bob. Of public comment, apparently I was asked by Councilman Carnahan, there is an equi-medical prayer service this Sunday at 2:00 at the Zion United Church of Christ on 113th out in Hanover Township. And a third, public comment to the council and to Chief Coulson, I've known Officer Bedoy for over 10 years, he's the chaplain in East Chicago Police Department as well. You will not find a more outstanding young man. Awesome, thanks for that report. Public comment, Roger, you had one, come on up.
Roger Hayward, I'm an alcoholic. This is my meeting.
Thank you, Roger.
Thanks, Roger, for a little humor.
I love it. So, for those who don't know me, I have an organization called Gary's Town, I help men that are incarcerated to change their mind about a few things. I'm also a director of NAMI, that's nationalized mental illness CIT training and facilitator. Reading Hospitality Group over here, they come into Gary, Indiana, Lake County to do some redevelopment improvements up town there. What else do I do here? Still city salvage, I'm on the board there for demolition and repurposing building materials. And then, in my spare time, I volunteer for rebuild together, we're coming to Cedar Lake, as you guys know, we're coming here in September. And then servants at work, who are, there's an organization in Indianapolis where we volunteer to build decks for the handicapped, no cost. We bring the materials and we make it happen for them, okay? And then, when I'm really, really bored, I'm a soccer coach. So, okay, so about two weeks ago or so, a gal, Charlotte Edwards, contacted the trustee's office, she needs a ramp built, okay? And what the trustee's office do is they contact my church, that faith church over here, and then they brought it to my attention because I know this is what I do. So, I went out and did a survey of the site and found out that, you know, you could easily put a ramp there, then it was a matter of the materials, and by the grace of God, UMC Church over here, they're in the process of demolition of the building for the food pantry, they have a ramp, okay? So, I went to get a couple of guys, we're going to just assemble the ramp and take it over there to install it for mischievous. And I did a little sketch drawing, I'll excuse, can you share it?
Oh, yeah, you can share it, no problem. You betcha. We can share it, too, Roger. That was a good.
Can you share?
Yeah, sure.
You should have your own, you're a train driver.
Hey, Tim, you want to come sit up here so you can take a look at his plan? Because you're the building guy.
You're the building guy?
He's the building guy. He's a jack of all trades.
Okay, so, yeah, what I'm asking for is, you know, if you guys let me do it, all right, if there's a building permit that's necessary, or a fee or anything like that, the lady's about 90 years old, I'm asking that you consider just waiving that, whatever it might be, because, you know, we're bringing the materials, I'm bringing the labor, it's not going to cost the gal a dime, it'll be professionally installed according to ADA standards, and I've done probably a dozen of these in Lake County, and I want to do one for this lady, and no cost to her, so she can get out of the house.
I would say then you probably just need to work with Jill and Tim. Tim, would you need us to approve waiving the fees at tonight's?
Is there, Tim, is there, is it an exorbitant fee that's attached to a building of a ramp?
It would probably be a $50 permit fee per ramp.
Okay.
So, I would say no.
I'm not changing anything, but I will be securing the ramp, you know, at the front of existing porch. Can you make sense of that drawing? It's kind of.
Kind of, but it's, I mean, normally, I mean, we require a survey to see where it's actually on the property, but we do have some concessions for ADA, I mean, this type of accessibility, obviously, we kind of use our discretion.
I can just, I mean, I can look at it in person and see, I can tell what you got over here, buddy.
It's movable.
So, it's temporary? Or is it, do you post-concreted in the ground?
No, no, it's actually, we put pedal stone down and build what we call UEs, okay, attach existing, the ramps that are going to be moved.
We'll let Tim communicate with you after tonight, and then you guys can iron it out. So, you're asking for the permit fees?
Yeah, if you like this happening.
If possible. I would say, I would be in favor of making motion to waive the fees contingent upon Tim's approval of site and site plan and.
Oh, amend the agenda to consider that, go ahead.
Add an agenda.
I made motion, we amend the agenda to consider this.
Okay, motion by Councilman Carnahan.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Foreman, questions or discussion? Call.
Barbara Carnahan?
Yes.
John Foreman?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Richard Sharpe?
Yes.
Frank Lehman?
Yes, John, go ahead with your.
Okay, now I'd like to make a motion for this gentleman to work with Tim Kabak on behalf of waiving the permit fee for Charlotte Edwards, 14125 Lowerland Street, contingent upon Tim's approval.
Okay, so we're waiving the permit fee for the ramp, contingent upon Tim's approval of design. Very good. The motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second, questions or discussion? Call.
Barbara Carnahan?
Yes.
John Foreman?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Richard Sharpe?
Yes.
You just voted three times. I don't know how Greg and Randy were going.
Are you running this election coming up here next week?
Yeah.
Over three times. It's approved, Roger. Hey, you are an example of a person who's lived a life, walked a path, and you show other people how to reach their potential. You've been my son's soccer coach a number of times, and my son just loves you. I'm not afraid to share.
You see some of the stuff he's done in the city of Gary. He's, he's a one-man force.
I watch him with the kids, I sit there and practice and observe, and I watch how kids respond to Roger, and he is just like a foundation for these kids and encouragement and pushes them to be the best they can be. And I haven't had a lot of opportunity to interact with you outside of that realm, but I can just imagine with what I see, what you do for other people. You're a definition of a public servant, Roger, you do what you're doing.
Man, well, just to come back to you, I heard you say that you haven't had an opportunity to interact with me a lot, I love to eat.
And you also bite yourself places I love it, Roger. I'm going to have to take you up on that.
Okay, well, second? So, yeah, what you say is right on, man, all right? So, you know, there's so much trauma, you know, in the life of these kids today, you know, we have to find a way to reach them, you know, and again, my opinion is that we need to stop punishing symptoms. I agree that a lot of the crime, if you will, is symptomatic of, in most cases, 85% or so over Lake County, is a symptom of substance use disorder, right? So, we absolutely must get to the bottom of that, all right, if we really want to affect a change and do something about this epidemic, okay? And I'm also on, I'm on that as well, so. I want to talk to you guys, if you guys get some help in helping your thinking, I'm also on, can you help your worker and a certified recovery specialist? So, if any of you guys are stressing or struggling in this area, you have some family members, I'm also going to be doing a seasonal effective disorder information, if you will, I'll do it over here at Case Lake, at the church, I'll cover it in about three or four weeks. I'll post that up on my Facebook, and I would like your Facebook feed, by the way.
Very good, Roger. Appreciate all you do, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Is there any other public comment? Third and final call for public comment, public comment's closed. Our next town council public meeting will be Tuesday, May 15th, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. Next Tuesday is primary election day, so vote. This meeting is adjourned. Hey, Mitch? You want to get your contract?